No, your country.
Mike, double clicking on that. Because all you have is the preview of the packet. Pack it up and you can use the thing to go from page to page.
Okay. What did you show them that? Oh, I see.
Ready to go?
Very cool.
Because you're only, you're only opening the preview when you're just previewing. And it won't have that, your ability to jump pages.
We saw her bring this all this stuff.
Where is the?
Just carrying half of Ryan Breder last year.
What are you talking about?
The Ryan Breder stuff, the crazy guy.
I gave it to Mike.
Oh.
Yeah, and I gave it to, I put it in your mailbox.
Okay. I should learn to start checking my mail.
We're gonna do this. If you would like to read it.
What if I don't?
Well, I'll read it if you do.
I gave you your whole number.
But we might be here all night.
Yeah, he's big time. No, the court has got three charges against him last week. Maybe he's holidaying, developing school. Just think much, I did that, dude, I said. I'm not gonna bug you, but. One of you guys should try to celebrate. In fear, Pacific Heights or something. Mad Max. The Murdian Boulevard. That's so not cool.
I can't laugh because I feel like I've been through that too.
It's horrible.
It's just.
Welcome everybody to the council meeting. And if we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You gave the invitation from the minister from Baptist Church?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for opportunity to assemble together to discuss matters at hand. You ask, you receive, seek, you should find, and knock the door open. So we stand even in your promises that you bless the mayor and the city council with your wisdom. Provide protection, provision for police officers and firemen. Father God, we just ask that you just bless this man with all that you can give. As you give direction, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Could we please have a roll call?
Certainly, councilpersons Baer.
Here.
Dupree, is that here? Ross.
Here.
Salsedo.
Here.
Zor.
Here.
Tobin.
Here.
And Mayor Higgins.
Here. I have a few things that I would like to go over real quick. A big, I want to give a big thank you to everybody who had anything to do with Downriver Comic Con this weekend. It was a great event for the city. It was, it's not a city event, but we have a lot of people from the city who are enjoying it and who come in and volunteer. And I'd like to congratulate them and announce that they raised close to $4,000 for Lincoln Park Athletics.
Oh, yes. Congratulations.
On something that's a very, very serious note to me and a very, very serious note to some other people. The trees are being cleared out on Council Point Park for the county's cleanup of the creek. They have taken down 19 of our memorial trees. And I'm going to pledge right here and right now, the city will be replacing all 19 trees. I assure you of that. They will be in Council Point Park. I can't give you a date at this time because we're gonna wait till, you know, the county gets done. And they will not be in the same locations for obvious reasons. But those trees will be replaced in the future. I'd like to remind everybody, the farmer's market every Sunday, right over there on Fort Street, just past Southfield, just past Park Restaurant, very fine restaurant, by the way. I'd like to remind everybody, there is a Rotary Dinner on June 29th. The Rotary will be celebrating 75 years and will be having a dinner, which will be giving the money back to the historical museum. And you can contact myself or the minister who was gracious tonight. He has tickets tonight. Please contact us. We want to make this a big thing. And lastly, we, the concerts at the park have started. This Thursday was a huge success. I would say 350 people easily. The black box challenge has started. What that is, is I carry a black box throughout the night. And whoever brings in the most amount of money at the end of the year, that band gets to start next year. The band that this first Thursday raised $964.88. So that we are off to a good grace.
Very nice.
Next, I have a proclamation from the city that I've asked the city clerk to read for me.
Whereas in early 1924, families from the Solvay processing plant gathered together in several homes to pray, eventually renting a building in Ekorst with the first service held in June of 1924, continuing to grow as the years went on. And whereas in June 1945, three lots were purchased at the corner of Detroit and Fort Street in Lincoln Park with an official dedication ceremony on October 5th, 1952, after the building was completed. And whereas Bethel Assembly of God has been faithfully dedicated to Bible-centered preaching and teaching, godly servant leadership, evangelism, and outreach, and committed to Lincoln Park and the surrounding community. And whereas on August 25th, 1924, the church was officially set in order and continues today as Bethel Assembly of God located at 2984 Fort Street in Lincoln Park, Michigan. And whereas their 100th anniversary celebration would be held on August 25th, 2024, now therefore, I, Michael Higgins, mayor of the city of Lincoln Park, do hereby proclaim Friday, August 25th, 2024, as Bethel Assembly of God Church Day in the city of Lincoln Park and extend my personal congratulations and warm wishes to the leaders and members of this church for 100 years of dedicated service to our community.
Bethel Assembly has been a great partner with the city in doing many different things and helping a lot of people over the years. And it is a great pleasure to be able to give them that. And I will give them that at the evening of the, they have, they're gonna have a group in their kind of an evening that night. We'll move on to the consent agenda. We have the approval of the minutes from the meeting of May 28th. The approval of council claims payable. We're gonna solicit bids for the IT services. Solicit bids for the asbestos removal of 2105 Morris. Accept the election results from May 2024. Schedule a public hearing for the DBB 2028, Austin. And we're gonna approve the renewal of the annual UADL.
I'll move.
I'll support. Through the chair?
Yes.
Could you just tell everybody what the UADL stands for?
Used Auto Dealer License.
And by the way, the DBB was, is the.
Dangerous Building.
Dangerous Building Board. Okay. Call for the cut, call for the vote.
Councilpersons Ross.
Yes.
Tobin.
Yes.
Baer.
Yes.
Salsedo.
Yes.
Zor.
Yes.
And Mayor Higgins.
Yes.
Maybe this one is. This is a budget, I think, so we'll ask the city manager to take care of it.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we are looking to adopt the recommended budget for 2024-25 fiscal year. The budget was presented to mayor and council, and the public hearing was held on May 26th, in accordance with Public Act 442. The only change that was made to the proposed budget was the court budget that was submitted after the original budget was presented to council. The change reflects only Lincoln Park's portion of the court budget. The appropriations resolution also includes the estimated tax millage rates to support this budget. Once the final millage rates are set, any changes to the anticipated revenues will be adjusted at the mid-year budget amendment. This budget also includes water and sewer and sanitation rates that are proposed as previously presented to mayor and council. The budget impact is that the 2024-25 fiscal year budget will go into effect July 1st, 2024, and continue through June 30th, 2025. It's recommended that the mayor and council approve the 2425 General Appropriations Act to continue city operations without delay.
This is a resolution to provide for adoption of a budget proposed by the mayor and council containing estimates of proposed revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, and millage rates to support this budget. Be it resolved by the city council of the city of Lincoln Park that for the expenditures of the city government and its activities for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, and ending June 30th, 2025, the amounts in the attached sections are hereby appropriated.
I'll move.
I'll support.
Just a quick question, Your Honor.
Mm-hmm.
Lisa, if, if a resident wanted to see the budget, where would they find it?
So if you go to the city's website, under the finance page, the current year proposed budget should be right on the main page there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
There's also a hard copy available in the city clerk's office for viewing.
Thank you.
Do we need a mover?
We have it.
Okay.
I was just waiting to see if there were any other questions or.
We can, we can do a roll call.
Okay. Councilpersons Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Higgins.
Yes.
Councilpersons Baer.
Yes.
Salsedo.
Yes.
Zor.
Yes.
And Tobin.
Yes.
Thank you.
And next up will be. I'm sorry, I'm having problems with my computer, folks.
Police chief?
Yeah, this is for the police chief. Oh, you know what, I would, I didn't say give me that, so I was going back and forth.
Okay.
All right, chief.
I'm sorry, first one is body cameras? Okay. Now, the police department is requesting council waive the bidding process and approve purchase of 45 Focus X2 body cameras and 16 Focus H2 in-car video systems for Safelite Coban Technologies, as well as enter into a five-year service contract for cameras, warranty software, and cloud-based data storage. Police Department has used Safelite since approximately 2010 with our in-car video systems right now. We don't have body cameras. This is something we're gonna be very eagerly moving towards. Our current video system server, the in-car video systems and maintenance are all covered through Safelite. Due to age and continuous use 24 hours a day, many of our current systems are outdated and operable. The digital software is approaching an end of life. With this service agreement, it will include 45 body cameras replaced every 24 months, 16 in-car videos, all licensing software warranties, and again, the cloud-based storage with this five-year service contract. We currently have six cameras in our vehicles, which Safelite made. They will be compatible with this new system. They're also receiving a credit from our purchase server back in 2022. The end of life for the current software is approaching February 28th of 2025. The cost of these 45 cameras and body cameras and 16 in-car video systems will be $350,922.92 over the next five years, which will equal $70,784.58 per year. The funds will come from the police department's computer maintenance account, 101305934C. For resolution as, whereas the Lincoln Park Police Department is requesting to purchase 45 Focus X2 body cameras and 16 Focus H2 in-car video systems with a five-year service contract. Be it resolved that mayor and council authorize the police department to waive the bidding process and purchase 45 X2 body worn cameras and 16 Focus H2 in-car video systems from Safelite Coban Technologies for a total cost of $353,922.92 over the course of a five-year service agreement. The funds for the purchase of the 45 cameras and the 16 car video systems will come from the police department's computer maintenance account,
So I'll move. Support. Chief, so the public understands, why are we not gonna, why do you now want to go offer bid for this?
Our current system we've had since 2010. We still have equipment that's gonna be compatible with it. It's just some of the software is ending life. And we're gonna be moving to our cloud-based with a, with retention.
So if we went with a different computer system, we would have to replace the whole system rather than just what we're doing?
Yes.
Okay. That's, that's why I want to make sure that everybody understands that.
And Safelite has been a great vendor for years and years.
Anybody else have any questions for the chief? Okay, then we will go for a bid.
Councilperson Zor.
Yes.
Baer.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Salsedo.
Yes.
Tobin.
Yes.
And Mayor Higgins.
Yes.
Next one. The police department is requesting to waive the bid process and lease two Xerox C8145H copiers. The police department is requesting us to, or council, to waive that and enter into a, I'm sorry, a lease agreement with these two copiers. Xerox has provided a state bid for the price. We currently have a lease agreement with Xerox, and it expires in June of 2024 with two copiers. The monthly lease payment is $569.16 for both copiers. This will be a savings of 22 cents less than what we're currently paying, paying per month. The price includes consumable supplies, all maintenance, and fixed pricing for additional copies over set monthly limits. The funds will come from the police department's maintenance contract, It's recommended that the mayor and council adopt the resolution. The resolution, Lincoln Park Police Department is requesting mayor and council, I'm sorry, resolution. Whereas the Lincoln Park Police Department is requesting to lease two Xerox C8145H copiers, be resolved that mayor and council authorize the police department to waive the bidding process and lease two Xerox C8145H copiers for a total monthly cost of $569.16 for 60 months from Xerox Corporation under the MyDeal contract. Be it further resolved, the funds from the lease of the two copiers to come from the police department's maintenance contract, account 101305934.
I'll move.
I'll support. And for the people at home, I'd like to remind everybody, the state, their state bid out for many, many things that cities use. And then that way, it stays cheaper all the way across the board. So a lot of times, that's why we skip bidding the process because it's already been done by the state and it's already been certified safe and good to use. So it's a, it's a good thing that cities have. Does anybody have any questions? With that, we will call for the vote.
Councilpersons Ross.
Yes.
Mayor Higgins.
Yes.
Councilman Baer.
Yes.
Salsedo.
Yes.
Zor.
Yes.
And Tobin.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor and council. Resolution to award the electronic messaging center bid. The city recently solicited bids for replacement of the two electronic message centers and the letterboard sign at the community center. The new signs have a higher resolution screen, and the program to edit the sign could be accessed by multiple staff members via computer or through mobile app. During the bidding process, 10 bids were received for various, from various companies. Nine of the companies that submitted bids completed a mandatory site visit, while one company did not. The lowest bid that the city received was for $106,831.50 from Johnson Sign Company located in Ypsilanti, Michigan. This price includes a five-year warranty for parts and a three-year warranty for labor with additional warranties available. The budget impact, the city is receiving funding annually from the county for park upgrades and equipment. This year, we are receiving $25,000. Once the project is approved by the county, a plaque will be added to the sign at the community center. The remaining balance of, will be covered by funds from the city's cable fund and capital funds. Recommendation is recommended the mayor and council approve the resolution to award the bid for the electronic messaging centers to Johnson Sign Company.
Whereas the current digital message centers require repairs and/or updating. Whereas the city solicited bids to replace two electronic message centers and one letterboard sign. Whereas 10 bids were received in the lowest bid of $106,831.50 is Johnson Sign Company in Ypsilanti. Now therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and council hereby approve the resolution to award the bid of the electronic message centers and the Johnson Sign Company, to the Johnson Sign Company.
I'll move.
I'll second with discussion.
Okay. Okay, we'll go for the discussion. Go ahead.
I am curious, is, when the Memorial Park sign, they're, they're bidding out for a two-sided sign. I don't understand why that sign would have two, two sides. The one side that is not, got anything there now faces south, it's on the, facing the northbound side of Ford Street. No traffic going north on Ford Street will see that sign. And traffic going south on Ford Street, it would be a distraction. I, I don't understand why we would decide to light that side of the sign at this extra cost when it's just, you know, I know when we first put the signs in, it was decided not to do that just because it would be a distraction to traffic traveling southbound on Ford Street with the lights and everything else going on. And now you've got this in the bid, and it's an extra expense to put that sign up, to do the work and put lights on that side of the sign. The other thing is, there's no mention anywhere in any of these bids, except for one of them, about the restoration work to, after the signs are up. And I'm just wondering, who's gonna be responsible for restoring the areas around the sign? Once they take the new ones out and they put, the old ones out, put the new ones in, who's gonna restore the areas around the sign? And is there gonna be a cost involved in that? And are these companies, is this company going to do that?
So as far as the restoration work, the two, the two current messaging center signs, the electronic signs, Southfield and Fort Street and Memorial Park, all they're doing is just what's already there. They're not gonna be messing with foundation work. They're not gonna be messing with any of the plantings around it. It's, it's all just gonna be the messaging centers themselves. So it's basically a swap-out, swap-in. At the community center, that sign is going to be removed at grade and down a little lower than grade, only because we have, we're not sure how far down those footings may go. They could go six feet or eight feet down in the ground. And it would be, they, all the companies had suggested cutting that grade, taking it a little lower. And then you could just backfill over the top of it with dirt right there. The, the sign at the community center is going to go in a different location on the other side of the driveway. So there would be some work that they're going to do. They're gonna do the restoration basically over on that side.
And you've spoken to them about it?
Yeah.
There's no mention of it in the bid.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
And then the, the Memorial Park sign, the expense to put, it's, you're basically putting in a double sign there. The, I mean, to put that sign on the other side is like building a new sign. Why, why are you doing that when it's not really gonna be seen? And it could be a hazard to motorists driving south on Ford Street trying to see what that sign says at 45 miles an hour that far away?
The resolution, I know the resolution of the signs has greatly increased. So you would be able to see that side of the sign now, if you're on the southbound side, going south. Whereas before, you, you could barely read that sign, even if you were on northbound coming at it, sometimes it was very hard to read it. All, speaking with the previous city manager, when we started looking at repairing the sign or replacing the sign, it was decided to look at getting two signs, a double-sided sign, just like we have at Fort Street and Southfield, and just like at the community center. That way, it's, it's visible from both sides. So that's why we just, we did a double-sided one right there. And that one, that side, it's a static panel, so it's just a lighted board. So that one is just gonna be a complete swap-out, swap, putting a newer board on that side. It's, it's gonna protrude a little farther than the other side does only because it was set up for a light, lighted board. But you won't be able to tell from driving by.
There's a big difference from southbound Ford Street than there is to the sign in the middle of Southfield Road and driving past this way, then across south, northbound Ford Street, the Murdian, and southbound. That's a big, big difference to see that sign over there. And I just think that it's, it's money being spent that's, could be a hazard that we've never had before. So I'm kinda worried about that. But thank you for your explanation.
Yep, no problem.
I just wanted to add that we have a lot of foot traffic around there. And bicycle traffic, you have the church traffic. And we really do have year-round activity there at the man shell. So I think it's, it will be seen from, from both sides.
Absolutely. I think there's, there's a lot of foot traffic with the Dairy Queen there, with the church being there. A lot of activity goes the other way. And not, not just Fort Street, but foot traffic, it's, I was thinking the same thing.
To the chair?
Yes.
Dennis, when it comes to allowing digital remote access, which we currently don't have, would you recommend a potential review of the pertinent ordinances as far as who has access and how we use those signs? Because I know we've had our current signs for decades and decades. And I know those ordinances are probably very old, but having more easily access or use. Do you think that would be a wise thing for us at council to look into?
I think that policy would need a little bit of a review only because we're, we're upgrading systems and upgrading how things operate and who's handling what. upgrading systems and upgrading how things operate and who's handling what. We're getting rid of a letterboard sign that only one person could manage, so we want to, we probably should take a look at it, just to make sure it falls in line with how the, how the program operates, who's going to operate it. So, in my opinion, yes, I would say we should, we should always look at a, look at updating the policies.
And the letterboard sign is the community's, correct?
Yes, yep.
Okay, I, I just would like, I'll make note of that, thank you.
Yep.
To the chair.
Yes.
Dennis, do we know, like, what the life expectancy is of these boards?
Um, they were all saying roughly around ten years before, things need to be upgraded with electronics. I mean, we've been looking at a sign for the community center for two, three years now, and in that time period right there, they've already changed technologies and improved on the resolutions of the signs and stuff, so the stuff that I looked at three, four years ago, they're not even selling it anymore, they've already moved to this other stuff. And, and both signs right now are over ten years old.
And Dennis, correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't get parts any longer for them, right?
Correct, like, the sign at the man shell at Memorial Park, there are panels that are actually, the connectors that hold them into the frames, the squares are dry rotting, and they're, they're no longer staying in the board. To replace one of those, it's going to be a used part off an old sign, because they don't even make that, that company doesn't even exist anymore. And that was the same thing with the repair for that sign was, it was going to be a used part, possibly, if they could even find a new part.
Any other questions? We will call for the vote.
Councilperson Ross?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
Baer?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Zor?
Yes.
And Mayor Higgins?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, John Kazoo, DPS Director. I brought before you a recommendation to reject the bids for the City Hall basement waterproofing proposal. Background City of Lincoln Park received and opened one bid on Wednesday, May 29th, 2024, for the City Hall basement waterproofing process or proposal. Since the bid received was significantly over our budget, funds for the project, I'm requesting that we reject all bids, and at this point in time, there be no budgetary impact. Recommendation is to Mayor and Council authorize the city to reject the one bid submitted for City Hall basement waterproofing. The proposal that I, or I should say, resolution I added to this was be it resolved that the mayor and council approve rejecting the bid received for the City Hall basement waterproofing project due to the bid being significantly higher than budgeted funds.
I'll move.
Support.
I just have one question. We don't have the funds that fits us, but we know the basement floods, what's the plan B?
Plan B is, so far we have had the ability to solicit, or excuse me, receive quotations, they're a little bit over the $5,000 mark, and either we go out to bid, or we wait a while and go back out maybe a little bit later when maybe the marketplace is maybe a little bit better.
All right.
To the chair. Is it, is that, will that include a sound pump, or?
No, it would not. It would be, basically dig out the, the bare concrete wall, clean it up if it has to have any epoxy coating put on it, then we would put epoxy coating on it, we'd put a mat up against it, backfill with probably clay material.
So you're not going to prevent it from flooding again, or?
I don't know, I, I haven't seen where that flooding's coming from. And I'm not too positive that we're really getting as much flooding as it was indicated. And the other thing, typically, what you would do for something like that, you'd look to see if there's a footing drain. A basement wall like a home typically would have footing drains, and you'd put a, a weeping tile in there and tie it into the footing drain so that it does drain out, but I'm not so sure this basement has footing drains.
Isn't that something that we should check first before we spend the money to fix the walls and everything?
Well, if the wall still has an issue with the problem and the concrete's being compromised, I still think that that needs to be done. Whether or not there is an existing footing drain to tie, footing drain tile into, we would do that, but if there isn't, we would repair the concrete and put a preservative, preservative over top of that compromised concrete and backfill it.
So the, the waterproofing's going to be on the outside or just on the inside?
No, it'll be on the outside, personally, I don't think. Putting waterproofing on the inside is ever a good idea, because why do you want con, or water to come through the concrete to further degrade the concrete?
I agree. Thank you, sir.
No further questions, a call for the vote.
Councilperson Tobin?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Baer?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Zor?
Yes.
And Mayor Higgins?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda for myself would be authorization to auction off a 1974 Fiat Allison Grader, our M142. Background City of Lincoln Park has a 1974 Fiat Allison Grader that has not been used, or is not being used by the city and is in non-working condition, costly to repair, and needs to be sold or scrapped out. Financially, there will be a positive impact on the budget when the equipment is sold. Proceeds will be credited to fleet management, sale of the used equipment, account numbers 661 932 649 000. Recommendation is that the mayor and council authorize the city to auction off, sell, or scrap out the 1974 Fiat Allison Grader, approximately 50 years old. I've been here short of 15 years, I've seen that piece of equipment run for approximately 20 minutes. Right now, I don't have an operator that could operate it. And with hydraulics, hydraulics usually fails with age, and this piece of equipment is 50 years old. So the resolution I have attached to it is be it resolved that the mayor and city council authorize City of Lincoln Park DPS to auction off, sell, scrap out the 1974 Fiat Allison Grader, M142 VIN 75 YD 1661.
I'll move.
Support.
Any questions? Then we will call for the vote.
Councilperson Baer?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Zor?
We are definitely going to try to auction first, correct?
Yes, sir, and I would not want to put it through, let's call it the car auction, I'd rather put it through an equipment auction, and there are some locations that do that.
Agreed. Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Higgins?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
With that, we're going to move to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, I'm actually going to combine my reports tonight since I'm up next as well. So I'll talk a little bit about the, the budget and where we're at. As you know, we are nearly complete with this current fiscal year, where the fiscal year will end June 30th for 2324 year. Right now, we are trending to be on track with estimates, both, currently both revenues and expenditures are at about 88% of the overall budget, and with just a month, about a month left in the, the year. The new budget was adopted by council tonight, so we'll begin that July 1st, and then we'll start prepping and getting ready for the audit for the current fiscal year. So that, they'll begin that in early October, so we'll begin the schedules, getting a better estimate of where we're at, making some year-end entries. So it's really early, I know the fiscal year ends June 30th, but we continue to pay bills all the way through the end of August for the previous fiscal year, so we really can't get a good grasp on where we're going to end until we get, you know, a couple months out from the fiscal year. So, and then, as you recall, last year, the city received a pension grant to bring us up to 60% funding, and it looks like, I got a notification that they're extending grant opportunities for the pension systems, out for any systems that are 22% spent between the ARC, which is the annual retiree contribution for the city, for both pension systems and the retiree healthcare portion. So if those exceed 22% of your general fund revenues, then you preliminarily qualify for the new grant, so they just came out with that information, so I'm starting to dig into that. It looks like we have to have the application submitted in July, and then notification would be received in August, so that would be wonderful if we got additional funding, so fingers crossed for that. And then for utility billing, we are currently in the shut, beginning the shut-off season, we're into District 3 already. We did also transfer $302,000 in past due accounts over to the upcoming summer taxes. That was compared to last year of $278,000, so we were up a little bit dollar-wise, but overall, the accounts dropped by about 100 accounts. So they had past due, those accounts have past due balances as of September 30th. If they don't get them brought up current, then the amount transfers to tax, taxes, and that's per the city ordinance. So again, we are in shut-off season now, so we've sent out letters to the first three districts. The first two districts represented just over 1,000 letters that were sent out, and out of those, 41 accounts did not make payments or set up a payment plan, so they resulted in being shut off. The overall shut-off so far, it's very early, but right now, they're down about 9%. There are a lot more payment options for residents in terms of Wayne Metro and the different organizations out there. Some of them have started to dry up, some they were put out during COVID times, and some of those have started to dry up, but there's still a lot of options, so we do give those to residents when they present issues with paying their water bill. And of course, we always try to work out payment plans with them as well. And then we have switched over to the new credit card processing for online services that went into, that went live about two weeks ago. We've had some minor hiccups, but we're working through those. Staff's done a really good job in working with the new service and figuring out the different issues that have come up, but overall, it seems like it's pretty user-friendly. It does offer quite a few more payment plans for residents as far as PayPal, Apple Pay, those types of things that they couldn't utilize before. There are fees involved, so I know there's been a lot of chatter about that, but we are trying to make sure we've got it on our website, we're adding additional messages to the bill, just so. Just so residents are aware that there are fees for those services. And again, that does not come to the city, it goes directly to the credit card company, it's a pass-through, we don't collect anything on those fees at all. They do still have the option to come to City Hall and pay with cash or check with no fee, they can go to the credit union, pay by cash or check there, they can always leave checks in the drop boxes, those are all free, no-charge options, so those continue to be offered. And then some other items, we are, as you approved tonight, bidding out IT services, and then we'll be putting out soon the bid for camera services for the different city buildings and locations, and then we also are working on the website, getting that bid out soon. And then a reminder that this week, Wednesday, is the bid opening for the rubbish collection, so we'll be looking forward to opening those bids and seeing what we have to deal with there. And then I just wanted to say one last thing, congratulations to Doris Kazo, she retired from the police department after 19 years with the city. Many of you remember her, from LP Prides is where she was at for many, many years, and then she's been working in records, so congratulations to her.
Absolutely, absolutely, congratulations to Doris. Can we have a hand for Doris? Okay, does anybody have any questions for the city manager?
To the chair?
Yes.
I don't know if you have already made a note of it, but based on the sign resolution, just making note about, about reviewing the ordinances and any modifications that we might, might need to look into, that's all.
Yeah, and any change to the policy would come before mayor and council as well.
Yeah.
So there may be some tweaks that we need to make it, make to it, and then we'll bring it to council to approve.
Okay, thank you.
I think Eric was next.
I just wanted to ask about the VIBRA site, the, we've had a lot of activity there lately.
Yes.
And I just hate to see that turn into a dilapidated building and, that we can't do anything with. I was, it's, it's in horrible shape right now.
We actually had a meeting today, that meeting, that building was discussed quite a bit with the department heads, so we are well aware of what's going on.
Yeah, and code enforcement has gone out there, the fire chief spoke with one of their representatives today, so they are supposed to be taking care of the grass, securing the building, boarding it up, and addressing some of those items that have been a big issue over there.
Do you know, do we ask them to put up a camera so that they, it's monitored?
I don't believe that was a topic of discussion, but, and I don't know legally, can we require that, Ed?
We can make recommendations, however, the site is vacant, I think we're going to ask the department, building department, the fire department to order the building abandoned and condemned temporarily to get their attention, we'll see what happens from that method.
Thank you, sir.
You can ask them to put up a camera, but to what purpose would that serve? By the time somebody finds out what goes on, you would have to think, police respond, it's better off just to board up everything and order it condemned, I would think.
Well, when it comes to theft and, you know, problems with the building, or even a fire, a jump or whatever, you would have video of stuff that happened prior to whatever.
Council will have the police chief take that suggestion back to them, and, and I'm not downplaying, and I think it's meritorious, but it'd take longer to put cameras up than it would to get the thing torn down, I think.
Correct. I just offered a suggestion.
Great suggestion, thank you.
Anything else for the city manager?
To the chair, Your Honor, briefly, Lisa, as you know, the dredging's going down at Council Point Park, I don't know if it's called dredging or the trees removal, when all that brush is removed, it's going to be like open water area, are we going to be proactive, perhaps put signs up, do not jump in the water, or any preventive signs? I know Mayor mentioned they're going to plant 19 trees, but there's going to be a long stretch where it's open water there, and you know, kids play that part.
I mean, that is a concern that's been discussed, is because right now, there's bushes and trees and things kind of shielding, somebody could still fall in the water, but there's a lot more shielding it, so we'll continue to, to talk about that.
All right, just wanted to bring it up, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, is there any movement on the building department, department head position?
So we are in the process of recruiting, we've got some applications that we've started to review, we do have the temporary building official in there right now, he's been working with everybody, you know, working on the animal shelter, all the different projects going on, so right now, things are flowing smoothly, and he's doing a good job, but we are, yes, we are still actively working.
CBDG?
The same there, so we have some new applications, we went through the first round of interviews, and that didn't go as planned, so we're setting up the second round now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Two things I want to say before I go on to your council. One, I want to thank the, our city attorney, he spoke with the attorneys and the owners of Ruby Recycling, and so they are aware of, and they are going to be talking to the neighbor, neighborhood and some of the people over there, to try to help clear up some of the situations over there, and I just wanted to, you know, thank Ed for doing that. I also want to say, since Council Point Park came up, number one, yes, we are going to replace the memorial trees. Number two, I want everybody to know that the Friends of the Detroit River have agreed to come forward after they're done over there, and they're going to be replacing grass and native things in the Council Point Park, so we won't have just, yuck, it will look nice. It may take a year or so till it all grows back nicely, but it will, but it'll be native and will still, county will still be able to get to the correct and clean, which is why they're doing the trees now. With that, I'll turn it over to the council president for, oh, I'm sorry, citizens, I'm sorry, I, I know he wants to leave early, so I was, would you like to talk now?
Oh, no.
Okay. All right, then we'll go with citizens, if anybody would like to speak with this body? Come on, this young lady up front.
Good evening, my name's Debbie White, I live at 3615 North Shore Drive, and it's coming on up to six months since we had flooding in January. I don't understand the process, if I put in a complaint about what I lost during the flood... If I put in a complaint about what I lost during the flood, what's the procedure? How long does it take for that to get reviewed? Who reviews it? Who makes a decision on whether or not the residents get anything compensated for their loss? So I'm just trying to get some information.
Mr. Zalik, would you answer that for us?
I'll give the general answer, madam, on behalf of the city, as the city has never paid claims unless there's direct fault pointing at the city for the cause of the flood. That has been resolved in the past, as you may or may not know, through various terms of class action litigation, where the homeowners get an average of $200 to $300 as part of the settlement after a period of years. This goes on for years and years. The last litigation the city had took approximately three years to resolve. Some have taken as long as eight years when they sue over the flood. But if there's direct fault where the city has bypassed the immunity requirements of the statute, then the city pays. But to this date, the investigation hasn't revealed the fault of the city, and that's perhaps why you haven't received a response either way. Historically in the past, the city would deny the claims, saying that there is no coverage, that the city's exempt and immune from liability. The city, in this instance, the mayor and council directed an investigation to see who's at fault, and unless Mr. Kazoo's still here and is willing to step up and say that they've completed their reports, the city has no other answer. The hard answer in these types of circumstances in all communities is the community's rarely paid unless there's a direct smoking gun pointing at fault at the community. There's some other fault they don't pay. So that's the safest answer. If the city's at fault, the city's always stepped up and done the right thing. Now, Mr. Kazoo doesn't appear to be lurching forward to tell you he has an answer, so sort of them things you, you would wait for. I would add parenthetically, if there are members up here whose basements have flooded, not just this time, but previous times, including previous mayors and council members, and I know that the, the mother of one of the judges here has had seven floods, and every time it rains, she raises hell with her son, the judge. So I know that it happens here all the time, and they're all pretty much in that same boat as you are. I wish I had a better answer, but the first answer we took, the date of the flood, was that if the city was at fault, the city would accept responsibility. But until that report comes forward, council's not taking any action. I'm sorry that I can't give you better news.
Well, that is not...
That's not what you wanted to hear.
No, it is not. I mean, you live in the city, you expect to have some kind of backup. I've been flooded three times with two foot of water. And what's my value of my home now? So who's going to want to buy a house that was been flooded like that? I, I don't understand why the city, I mean, this was the pump house. You guys even said it was the pump house. So, yeah, City of Lincoln Park is not for the residents.
I, I want to state for the record, the pump house did not fail that night. That was not the issue. And I will, but I will tell you, the pump houses, I signed the contracts today for the pump house at Emmons to be replaced. So they're taken care of. So everybody in the council should know that.
Work is on its way.
Work is on its way. And also, I want you to know, the whole reason that the county's taken down those trees at Council Point Park is because we need to get the creek to flow, because that is a watershed, and that's where water is dumped into the creek. So with that water being shed, for the neighbors and the people who have had houses flood over the years, this will be a relief. That is what, why they are doing that.
Anybody else would like to come to the council? Gentleman off to the right, or, in that case, he's to the left.
My name is Myron McLean. I live at 1503 Goddard, and I'm glad the police chief is here, because I spoke to him a few weeks ago about all of the truck traffic that is on Goddard Road. We have put up all of them signs that says no trucks, and I've yet to see one stopped in a year's time since they put them signs up. When I spoke to him, he said the problem was Southfield was shut down. But that's not Lincoln Park's problem. We have our own roads to take care of. And believe me, Goddard is not in that good a shape. Sometimes it looks like there's more patches than there is cement. He told me that they had two police officers that were in charge of commercial vehicles, but we don't weigh anything. We don't have any scales. So to me, that means that them signs were put up there as a traffic stop. A week and a half ago, I stopped at the stop sign at Howard and Goddard with a police car parked right next to me. I drove two blocks to Lafayette, parked in my garage, walked up to the side of my side door, and two trucks went by, and no police officer. I've been out there when as many as five cement trucks loaded, all axles on the ground, turned right on Fort Street. If we weighed them, we wouldn't have to pay, pay an officer if he sit there all week if they scaled them. Our police department is wonderful. I know, I've had to use them. But I just don't understand why there's one 25 mile an hour speed sign on Goddard from Dix, and they catch people speeding. There's one stop sign at Howard, and they catch people running that stop sign. There are four no-truck signs between Dix and Lafayette. No trucks have been stopped. I can even tell you just about the day that the Wyandotte garbage truck works on that end of Wyandotte, because he uses Goddard. It's a convenient street. There's only one stop sign. And the excuse that Southfield is shut down is not an excuse. I know, I drove truck for 31 years. You find a way legally, or you get a ticket. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Somebody else like to talk to the council? Larry, come on up.
Some people think I should just fall down and go home.
Honorable former councilman, Larry Kelsey.
Good evening, mayor and council. I just want to make a, a comment about our building superintendent, John Myers. I understand he left two weeks ago. And I know when I was on the council, some of you were on the council with me, some not, is that we didn't have an in-house building superintendent. And we made sure when we hired John Myers that we had one. And when he come in here, he had meetings with the landlords over the tenant issues, because I know I was here. He had meetings with the people at the trailer park, along with some other elected officials to make sure that that was taken care of, and that has been taken care of it. He's also made some meetings when they, we, not we, the council decided to update the procedures for how we do the inspection, or how the, the ordinance people work out of his department. I've seen over the years in my position as a councilperson that sometimes the city doesn't realize how important people are. And I'm not saying this council does, I'm saying in general, when I was on council. And there was quite a few of them that didn't stay here because of the way they were treated. I guess my point of it is, is John Myers went to another city, and I think he was a very valuable part of this city to, not only did he think out of the box, but he went ahead and made sure he was available to everybody, including most of the council that's here, including myself, on numerous occasions. He was part of the, the building department to see about the dangerous buildings. He was here for the other issues, the planning commission, so he had quite a few duties that he was involved in. Personally, I miss the man. I found him very reliable, very honest, and very dedicated. And I'm just saying, as we go forward, to make sure that, that we look at the people that we have. And if there are issues, we take care of them. If there aren't, some people just move on. But my experience has been, in my previous position in private sector before I came here, is that your people are the most valuable thing that you have. This city doesn't sell a product. We sell service, plain and simple. No product, no trucks, no cars, we're about the service. And I would just ask the council and the, the new city manager to remember that when we're dealing with people. They are people, and they do make the city look good. And like I say, I personally miss the man. I thought he was outstanding example of a person who had everything that the city was looking for and then some. Thank you.
Thank you. And John's not here to say it, but I will tell you, I absolutely agree 100%. He was a, a good man. Is there anybody else up here would like to speak with the council? Okay, with that, we will go with the council president.
Thank you, mayor. I'll just make this brief. I participated in the Rails Rally 5K walk-in run this Saturday. It was a great crowd. I don't know the amount of people that participated, but it was fun, and I did finish, I won't say the number, but I did finish. With that, happy June 13, happy Juneteenth, and also happy 4th of July. We'll see you all in July. Thank you.
Wait, do we have another meeting, I think?
Oh, do we? I may not be here, so I'm just tipping you guys off right now. Thank you.
He's moving ahead here.
I was also at the 5K. I didn't see you cross the, the finish line. I was handing out medals. But there were 333 runners at the 5K this year. It was fantastic, and to see those kids when they take off and the smiles on their face, and then to see them cross that finish line panting and sweaty and that, but still so happy and the achievements they did, it was just fabulous. So I just got to say, well done to everybody. Remember our farmer's market on Saturday, on Saturdays?
Sundays.
On Sundays? They had the plant swap, great event. Just make sure you come out and see everything. The concert on Thursday with Infinity and Beyond, the Journey tribute was really great. A lot of people there, it was a lot of fun. Lincoln Park Days is at the end of August, August 23rd, 24th, and 25th. Make sure you mark your calendars. It's going to be a lot of fun this year. We've got new things planned. We're going to have a Vegas tent, bingo tent. We might even open up on Thursday this year for a little surprise that if we swing it, I'll let you guys know shortly. It's kind of a surprise right now, but we're working on it. And I have to agree with everything former councilman Larry Kelsey said. I have felt this way since before I got on council. The people that work in this city are our backbone, and we should respect them, and we should listen to them, and we should always help them and move the city forward with them and their hard work. So thank you for that, Larry. I really appreciate it. And with that, enjoy the warm weather. Don't say the R-word, because we don't want any of that, except like, you know, at night when we're sleeping. And everybody stay safe, and thank you. That's it.
Thank you.
I just happened to think, we were talking about our events coming up, and I, I didn't, forgot to write it down. This weekend, this weekend is Citywide Garage Sale Day.
That's right.
Right?
That's right.
So I wanted to make sure that got out there. It's all over the city, Free Garage Sale Day. Last year, we had clear, almost 200 garage sales. This is the day to come shopping. All right? All right, I just wanted to get down. Okay, Lillian, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to say thank you to the hands of the city, too, for, for working hard and endlessly on the Comic-Con. And again, I know it's not a city event, but when it benefits our kids in the schools, that is something very special. And Comic, you know, the thing is, is that Comic-Con has something for everyone. It isn't just about comics, although it is nice to have Bill Morrison there, but there, there are a lot of other things there, too. There are a lot of artists with, you know, their projects that, you know, the things that they do, and it's, it's a way for them to show off.
And we want to congratulate Lillian, because she won one of the raffles. Actually, and her husband won one, too, so.
Yeah, and it wasn't, it wasn't comics, it was Tupperware.
She won Tupperware.
So, so if you haven't been to one, you'll have to, you'll have to, you'll have to go to one. So with that, thank you again to the hands of the city. I wanted to remind you of, of other events going on in the city, and that is the monthly park cleanup days. The next one will be June 15th, and that will be from 10 to 2:00. And again, sign up is at the ban shelf. The June 29th is going to be a big day for us. We have, well, we'll start off with the Wayne County Household Hazardous Waste Collection from 8 to 1:00, and that'll be at Henry Ford College in Dearborn. We'll also have Wayne Health Mobile Unit in partnership with the Lincoln Park Parks and Rec at the Community Center, Saturday, the 29th, from 1:00 to 5:00. And they're going to offer some free health screenings. Then we'll have our Lincoln Park Police Department at the McDonald's on Fort Street, 1469 Fort Street. They're going to host a safety day. So they will have, you'll have the opportunity to meet members of our Fight Police and Fire. So that'll be fun, and that'll be from 1:00 to 3:00 on the 29th. And again, I know we've mentioned it, the 75-year celebration of the Lincoln Park Rotary Club. And this is for everyone. This isn't, you know, just for certain people. Everyone is welcome. This will be at Bethel Assembly of God at 5:00 PM on the 29th. And again, tickets are $25, and it includes dinner and a very fun evening. Again, the proceeds will, will help benefit the Lincoln Park Historical Museum. And just a reminder that the museum has their new exhibit, the anniversary, the 80th anniversary of the, of D-Day, June 6, 1944, remembering those who have served in World War II from Lincoln Park. The exhibit is open during regular hours and will close after the Labor Day weekend. But the museum, just so that you know, the museum will be closed the July 3rd and the 6th for the holiday. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Alton Bear.
Thank you. To echo what former councilman Kelsey and Councilwoman Tobin said, I certainly did value John Myers' service to the city, and I did personally let him know that before he officially walked away. He was a, a great asset to the city, and it, it will be a chore to replace him with somebody that could be considered his equal. So I certainly appreciate him and all of our department heads and workers that really, that really make this city go. And I am a member of the hands of the city, so I do appreciate the kind words that people say about the Comic-Con that we did this weekend. Like Councilwoman Ross said, it is a great way for local artists, vendors, and stores to get out there, promote themselves, sell, sell their wares. And it was, we call it a resounding success, and we will be, like the mayor said, donating several thousand dollars to Lincoln Park Athletics. I'm very proud to say that this is the only downriver city that does not charge for sports, and that's why we feel so passionate about doing the, the Comic-Con every year and try to do it our absolutely best each and every year. And as everyone has mentioned, there's a lot of great summer events coming up in Lincoln Park. I'll knock on wood and hopefully keep that R-word away from all of, all of our wonderful event. And have a great night, everyone. Thank you.
Alton Mazzor.
Yeah, first, I'd like to start off with saying congratulations to all of our 24, or 2024 graduating students, not only from the high school, with 53 students speaking multiple languages this year, and our students from mixture school graduating to the high school. It was a great ceremony. They have the new board at the high school. Everything just went very well this year. They, they really were worried that it was going to rain on the event, but it turned out to be a, a good evening. Also, there were people behind the scenes at the 5K run last weekend that you might not have seen. I want to say thanks to everybody. I want to say thanks to everybody from the police department and, of course, the emergency teams that we have assist with that. Thank you. Dennis. And with that, I say have a good evening. And I also want to say that the officers that are out there, I know you don't see them for ticketing trucks, but I can assure you that multiple times I've seen them with two and three trucks. And I want to say the number roughly around 300 last month of tickets written to trucks. And those aren't cheap tickets. And with that, I'll say good evening.
Thank you. And with that, I'll call for the adjournment. And since color officers in here, I will say, make that a motion.
Mayor Higgins?
Yes.
Councilperson Tobin?
Yes.
Bear?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsido is gone? Mazzor?
He had a personal.
Yes, can I say that I won't be here for the next meeting? The last weekend of June, I will be gone.
I'll make note of that.
On record.
All right.